I call this meeting on Monday, August 7, 2023, a regular board meeting to order of the Lakota Local School District. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll?
Mr. Deke?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Shaffer?
Here.
Ms. O'Conner?
Here. Board will move to number two, the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaffer. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there a discussion?
Yes, on number 10, can we please pull out letter B?
Anything further?
It's been appropriate time to discuss changing our agendas into the future.
Let's wait until we talk about setting up board meetings. We'll do that in a few minutes if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay. All right, without any further discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Deke?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. O'Conner?
Yes. Board will move to number three, a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official based on Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1A to conference with legal counsel concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent board action based on Ohio Revised Code 121.22G3. Is there a motion?
Motion to enter into executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Deke. Discussion? We'll call the roll.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. Deke?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Conner?
Yes. We'll recess into executive session and we'll see you all shortly.
Back to the icebox.
There's a breeze.
Everybody ready?
Uh huh.
I'm going to call us back to order. The board met earlier in executive session. We'll move to number four on our agenda, the opening items. Mrs. Bodie, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to B, the board president comments. I do want to remind the board, we have convocation coming up on eight eleven, that's a Friday, starting at one o'clock. And that is at Lakota West.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And I believe Dr. Lully has sent out some information on ways that we can be involved in that, so I hope everyone is able to attend. We are looking at doing a special meeting for personnel on the sixteenth. Does that work for everyone's schedule?
Yes.
We'll do an early start of five o'clock if everyone can make that. It's good for you?
Yes.
Mr. Edie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
I'll make it work.
And this is?
This is next, you're talking about next week, five o'clock, yes.
Yeah.
I'll be on time. And it's just be an executive session, correct?
It is, we'll open in regular session, but it'll, the entire thing will be executive session. Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll notice that, Mr. Zink?
Location will be here?
Okay.
I'm asking.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Did you want to do central office?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we just want, so they don't have to redo the stage? Do we just want to do it in central office since we're going directly?
Why don't we do that?
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, then they don't have to redo this.
We also had some discussion about changing our notice meeting times for the rest of the year to begin following our community listening sessions or at six thirty. But for instance, tonight, we had one speaker. We could have started our meeting earlier with our executive session, but we couldn't change that within that short period of time because it has to be more than twenty-four hours' notice. So how does the board feel about that? Would you be comfortable changing the notices for the rest of the year to have that flexibility?
So saying something like follow, ten minutes following the learning session?
Mr. Zink, how would you word it?
That would be very, that would be how I would word that. Is listening session and then meeting at a increment following the listening session, that way everybody had time. Probably would also be a good idea to maybe post how many participants we were going to have in that night's listening session so that somebody in the community could see that on the webpage or something of that nature.
To have some idea of what the start time would be.
Yeah.
So you would notice each meeting separately? I think you would just post.
It would, it would be posting the rules and we'll get a legal opinion to verify that we can do this. But then we would just post that it would be following the listening session, but we could put something on the webpage to give people a reference point if they wanted to see that.
I think an easy way to solve this would to be, it would be to make public comment part of the agenda and part of the board meeting again. That way we don't even have to worry about that.
To me, this seems like kind of a compromised position or at this point, like that we're still kind of making it flow more efficiently. We're still honoring the changes and we can continue to look at that perhaps at the next board meeting in January.
Anything else? Mrs. Casper?
No, I'm fine.
So can we give Mr. Zink direction to go ahead and do that?
Mr. Zink, here's your direction to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
That good?
Very well, that's all that I have at this point in time. Dr. Lully?
Thank you very much. I, I want to respond to a question that occurred at the listening session on July seventeenth. Mrs. Jackson raised a concern and provided a picture of a cup of water that was from a drinking fountain at West Freshman. And we wanted to identify, she couldn't identify specifically which drinking fountain in the picture, but she thought it was near the innovation lab there at the building and thought the timeframe was sometime in the spring. We investigated that, facilities team inspected all the fountains and now has them on a daily preventative maintenance plan to identify any potential issues and to try and replicate the discoloration presented in the picture. In addition to that, the team has contracted with Sierra Consulting to take water samples from each water fountain at West Freshman and in the kitchen. They took samples on August fourth and estimated seven to ten days we'll get the results back from the lab. Once they have the results, they can actually respond accordingly if needed. Though this will be continued preventative maintenance and will continue no matter what the lab results are. So we're going to be on top of that water situation there, making sure that there isn't anything else to worry about with the water fountains or in the kitchen area.
How quickly can that be turned around?
Say that again.
How quickly can that be turned around? Will it happen before the start of the school year?
They'll actually have the, they sampled it on August fourth, so they should have the results back right as school's starting. But they haven't been able to replicate the discoloration at all.
Thank you for being, for that action you took.
That, that would, the operations team acted very quickly on that, so I really think they are doing what they should be, so I want to thank them as well. So thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Lully? Thank you for the follow-up. We'll move to Mr. Zink, treasurer's comments.
Yeah, we recently went, district's data for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three is live on the Ohio checkbook. So if anybody wants to go out and check some of that out, there, there is a little bit of descriptions that it won't show, but it will give everybody a little bit of a feel for how we're spending our resources, so we're happy about that. Mr. Oskley, with his background in Ohio checkbook, he put a lot of work into that as well to get that off the ground very quickly for us. Also, we have done in the treasurer's office a bit of a rearrangement. We've now kind of split up payroll, budgetary and benefits, so we're hoping that that will help turn around time for staff processing and essentially make the treasurer's office disappear, which is what we all want to do. When we're doing well, we don't get any calls and nobody even thinks of us.
Thank you, Mr. Zink, and thank you for getting that up and running onto your team. We appreciate his past experience, which helped with that. And that will be a quarterly update to that?
Yes, it will be updated quarterly.
Any questions for Mr. Zink? None. We'll move on to board reports. Board Policy Committee meets, Mr. Zink?
August eighteenth at ten AM.
Community Engagement Committee meets? Mrs. Casper?
August seventeenth at four PM.
Butler Technology and Career Schools, Mrs. Schaefer?
Our next meeting will be a week from Tuesday, so the fifteenth. Recently, in the budget, the, there was three hundred million dollars approved for expansion of career technical centers. Butler Tech is hoping within the next month to hear whether or not we will get additional funding to be able to expand the bioscience building, so they're continuing to be hopeful on that and meet with Cincinnati State to see about that expansion. Recently, Butler Tech hosted the Advanced Manufacturing Industry Partnership in the Megatronics facility as well as the Business Advisory Meeting, which had over fifty businesses represented. They co-hosted with Miami University to talk about the collaboration that is going to happen between the two entities at Quantum Leap and the Megatronics Center. They're looking at expanding right now. There is a tenth grade general admittance that you can get into and then you go into your specific field of study for eleventh and twelfth grade. With the expansion of the two new facilities, they're looking at changing the programs for machining, welding and IT to actually be three-year programs. And with that, they're also hoping to increase the number of students served by seventy-five students. And then they're also looking to add diversified engineering and that would also be a three-year program. And they're hoping to increase, that increases one hundred and fifty students and they're hoping to continue to decrease their waitlist because right now, that's especially long in the tenth grade. And they're hoping to increase, that increases a hundred and fifty students and they're hoping to continue to decrease their waitlist because right now, that's especially long in the tenth grade programs. And last thing, lunch was increased to four dollars for our Butler Tech students, so Lakota is a lunch bargain when I was checking with Chris on what our lunches are here, so that was just another change.
What is the price here for this year?
He said two seventy-five depending upon your lunch and what you get that's reimbursable and what it's, but the base lunch is two seventy-five.
Anything for Mrs. Schaefer? Hearing nothing, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, we'll move to Facilities, which will be on, Mr. Zink?
We currently have that scheduled for August eighteenth at two PM. I looked at our schedule for August eighteenth and if possible, we could move that to twelve PM because we've had some movement on the other committee meetings. And then on down, we have currently the Safety Committee at twelve PM, we could move that into the eleventh slot. So that would take us from ten, eleven, and then twelve.
For the Finance is what time?
The Facilities.
Its Policy is ten.
Facility will be, okay, twelve.
Safety is eleven, Facilities would be twelve.
That way, we can keep it, right now, we have an hour gap in between all committee meetings on that day. So this would allow us to kind of condense that into, into one. And I could also, if everybody was okay with it, I could notice it as such for the November seventeenth as well, which is the, the next one we would have.
Yeah, it's a good idea to have them back-to-back instead of big gaps in between each one. Can I make a suggestion, though? If we do have people who want to come and observe those meetings, then that gives them an hour where we go into executive session for safety. So then they've got the ten o'clock and the twelve o'clock, but not the eleven o'clock, if I'm understanding that correctly. So maybe for the community that's choosing to observe, I don't know if that works with other people's schedule. Would it make more sense to put Facilities at eleven and Safety at twelve?
My concern with Facilities, and I understand your point is well-taken. My concern is we have a lot to cover in Facilities, is an hour going to be enough time? So maybe before you do that notice, let's check in with Mr. Vogelmann on the Policy Committee, what kind of timeframe he's looking at, and Mr. Passage on the Facilities and making sure that an hour is going to be sufficient.
Could do that, another crazy idea we could do is we could move Policy to eleven.
That's true.
And we could move Safety to ten.
Yeah.
So that we would start off with the executive session.
That's probably better.
So move Safety to ten. Can we have a recap?
Just know that it will be from ten to one.
That's all we really need to know.
On the eighteenth.
Okay, we just need to be there, ten to one, on the eighteenth.
Safety at ten, Policy at eleven, Facilities at twelve. All right. And everyone's comfortable with that for the next two quarterly meetings?
Yeah. And the other one's November seventeenth, correct, Ed?
Yes.
November seventeenth, yeah. Yeah, this is going to be another really lengthy public notice that I'll be putting together.
Your favorites.
Three-page notice. Thank you, Mr. Zink, for keeping us straight and getting that word out as soon as you can. Finance Committee?
Meets again August fifteenth at three.
Three PM.
Three PM, not AM, correct.
Legislative? Board, we did have three of us along with our Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer that attended the BAD conference. And we can talk about that here, we can talk about that under Professional Development. I would say it was legislative. So this conference was presented by OASBO, BASA, and OSBA. It included a legislative review. Dr. Howard Fleeter gave us an update, he's always just amazing when he talks about school finances. The ODE Budget Director gave us an update as well on some of the changes. There was a policy analysis of recent legislation, how the budget bill broke down and what that would translate to within policy. And there was a panel of some of our legislators as well, talking about some things. Ed Choice was very much a key discussion there, so would anyone who was there like to talk about it?
I can, I can throw out there, for fiscal twenty-four, the, the base cost funding is eight thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. That's what they're giving for each student. However, we do have the Wealth Index, which we get twenty-one percent of that. So the Wealth Index takes into consideration property values and local in, or local incomes and things of that nature to then come up with what our local capacity would be. So we are currently at twenty-one percent right now. Also, they're going into the next year of the phase-in, which will take us from thirty-three percent up to the fifty percent of that House Bill one-ten phase-in. So that, they're anticipating that will hit in August with our foundation payments this month. And then when they put in the fiscal year twenty-two components, that's really going to affect us the most in a positive way because we're on the guarantee for the base. That will come in, they're anticipating by October. So still a little bit of time between here and there.
Thank you.
For me, the, the probably biggest takeaway is when we, they had the panel of representatives and the two folks from the House, there was a Democrat and a Republican there, and they spoke about how nothing is more important than strong public schools within the state of Ohio. And that if you want businesses to be successful in the state, that you have to start with a strong foundation to make sure you have an educated workforce. And it was nice to hear the support from both sides of the aisle and they recognized the critical importance of the work that you all are doing every single day. So I was very happy to see that and they talked about, while it's not perfect, how much progress has been made with the new funding formula and I was very pleased to see that. Support for continuing to fund the formula going forward and recognizing that it is critically important again to our success.
And there was not a commitment to the second set of, to the third and fourth year when they originally started the fairer school funding formula, so it was nice to see that that was carried forward. I also liked the fact that they talked about accountability and transparency within the Ed Choice Bill. And it was again on both sides of the aisle that they said there are pieces that aren't there that need to be there and that that's continuing work that they need to do to make sure that private and public schools are being held to the same level of accountability and fiscal transparency. And it was good to hear that there are concerns about that because they certainly heard it from the room. Kelly?
Yes, I, I love the BAD conference, mostly because it's, it's, they do a great job breaking down the budget, so it's always great to hear. Especially, I like the commitment that the Governor has put into the budget that everybody in the room supported for mental health, that that's not going away and that he's very committed to the mental health portion of the budget. I did agree with both of Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. O'Connor on the panel. It was, I've been to a lot of these and it was the first time that it was nice to hear collaboration on both sides of the aisle and the importance of public education. Somebody asked the question about the phase-in, if in the next budget, would they think that still consider the phase-in if we did not have the income in the state and the revenue that we currently have? And that's when they said it's a priority and that the money is there, it's just how we choose to allocate it. And if you want a strong workforce and if you want Intels to be coming, places, companies like that to come to Ohio, you have to have a good public education foundation. So it's very interesting to me when they, when you dig into the details. So it was, I, I really enjoy, I don't always enjoy the panel because it's mostly just them nitpicking at each other, but this time, I really felt a collaboration and you could tell that they worked hard and they were all very impressive. Some were new, there was a freshman state rep on there who has been in office since January and had a lot of knowledge and a lot of just really good points and how he learned so much and with, working with his fellow state legislators on the budget bill. He said he was very fortunate to be in the room on the Education Committee for this biennial budget and so he was very impressive. He's actually from Cincinnati, he has the west side of Cincinnati. Mm-hmm, yeah. So it was just, it's a good because it, it allows you to ask some questions on a larger scale that you don't always get a chance. But the commitment to public education from the legislators was, was very, very much a good thing to see, so.
And it was school board members, Treasurers, Superintendents, it was a pretty broad group of stakeholders that were, that were present. Anything else on the BAD conference? I know we just like saying that.
We just like saying the BAD conference. They even realized that they said the Ackerman's not the best.
It stands for Budget Analysis and Discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Mr. Zink, did you have anything else?
I was really paying attention to try to catch some of the components on places where we might be able to see some additional funding. One of the places I was really kind of holding out hope for was on the sports gaming. Since that was new, I thought that we were going to see some additional. And they, it was kind of disappointing that they were using that to fund this year's biennial. So I was kind of hoping that we would see that in additional, but we didn't, they didn't do that, so. That was one of them that I was a little disappointed by. So I was hoping maybe that could help with some of our fees that we charge right now.
We did take a moment to talk to some of our legislative reps from OSBA for a minute afterwards about transportation and is it possible there could be any changes there? And I, I don't know that we've heard anything back on that.
Yeah, I, I spoke with one of the OSBA folks about what we've been talking about for years and we've asked before if there would be any opportunity to charge a small fee for our high school transportation so we could share that cost with our families, but then everyone wouldn't just automatically sign up for it, so we'd have empty buses. It would actually be full of buses of people who actually wanted it because they would have a little bit of a fee that they themselves would pay as well. And they said that they would look into that and see, I know we've been told before, there's not legislative will to do that, but they did say right now, there are so many changes being made that that is something. Like you don't require us to provide transportation, but then you also say that if we want to share that cost, we can't do that either. And that seems like we'd be better off sharing the cost and providing it than not providing it at all. And it might be a nice medium way to do things.
They did, part of it was also, part of the change in the biennial budget was that they are allowing us to use vans for smaller groups, which has not been a possibility before, instead of having to use an entire big bus. So there may be some cost reductions, we could do that way too, so I'm sure Mr. Passage will be looking at that.
Because right now legally, we're not allowed to charge for any kind of bus.
Right. Okay, with nothing else, any further Board Professional Development? Anything?
I have a couple of events that I'm, that are in the future.
You want to talk about them?
I'll talk about them after I go to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. D?
Yeah, I have some invitations that I'm going to consider, will look at my calendar to see if I'm going to attend, if I do.
Okay. Mr. Zink, I think you sent out, but I don't know if you sent it to all of the Board, the presentations for the BAD conference?
I did.
Okay. So everyone should have that information if you'd like to review it and have any questions about it. We'll move on to number seven, the Administrative Report, and Dr. Lully will talk about the upcoming school year.
Did you skip the rest of the committee?
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, I did, I went to the Professional Development and stuff.
Yeah, you, you could.
I apologize for it. Community Diversity Council actually meets this Wednesday for the very first time and that'll be at six PM and we are looking forward to that.
Six PM.
That event.
Where are you meeting at?
Six PM on Wednesday. We're at, at the Lakota East Innovation Hub.
Safety Committee, we've already discussed, next Business Advisory Committee?
That is August twenty-fifth at one PM.
And the next Community Curriculum Advisory Team meeting?
September eleventh at six.
Thank you. All right, anything further under Board Reports? We will now move to the Administrative Report. Dr. Lully?
I would ask for your tolerance and forgiveness for a very long report today, but I'm going to use that I'm new. I promise, I promise they won't be this long in the future. We have currently going on a community-wide thought exchange open to gather feedback for the CCAT. And all of the information can be found on the website for anyone that's interested in going on there before the end of August to respond about our curriculum and their questions or concerns that they might have about the curriculum so that the CCAT can then analyze all that. Currently, we've had so far two hundred and seventy-two participants and a hundred and seventy-five thoughts that have been shared. So we're going to continue to promote it through the usual channels, through our social media, making sure that everybody knows that this is open at this time and that we're seeking that input from the entire community. The second thing I'd like to talk about is we're, we're really excited to welcome back the students on August fifteenth and sixteenth. We do have a staggered start and we'll welcome back half of the students on the fifteenth and half of the students on the sixteenth. The reason that we do that is so that our staff can actually focus on getting to know the students a little bit sooner and quicker by bringing in half the, the students so that I can get to know you and get to potentially meet you individually before we actually have the entire class there. So it's a great idea, great opportunity for our students. Our students have such a variety of, of opportunities waiting on them. I'd like to encourage parents to reach out to the students' teachers, to introduce themselves at open houses, to make sure that they sign up for conferences, and to ask about how Canvas and other software elements work in the district. We truly believe that parents are partners in this journey through the schools and without the parents being actively engaged with their students' education, it's very difficult for us to fully engage with the student and their, and their families. So it's really important that we refocus that and that we look at that and ask that you actually participate as a parent much more frequently and more fully than maybe you have in the past. Since July nineteenth, I've been really busy learning about Lakota. Currently, there are over seventeen thousand five hundred students in the district. That increased by almost a hundred students by the first time I looked at it in the middle of July, I think it was because I came.
That's it, thank you.
We will give you credit.
I, I think that's what, what caused it. I've also visited band camps and, and I saw, you know, football practices, I've seen the soccer teams, the tennis teams, all practicing. And I've also walked the halls of a few schools and noting the variety of experiences that are displayed and opportunities offered to our students, like gifted experiences, Project Lead the Way, which is a great STEM program, classes for students with disabilities, and of course, classes for the arts. And additionally, I learned that Lakota students speak sixty different languages. That's amazing to me. This diversity in student population and student interest and student ability levels really makes Lakota a very, very unique and special school district. I appreciate you allowing me to be here to experience the excitement and happiness I've sensed from those who are part of this district, especially when I see so many students in the buildings already. And I also have to mention how clean the buildings are. That's a, that's a shout-out to the custodial crews and the people that have worked all summer long. You can see your reflection in the floors. I mean, it's amazing how beautiful everything looks and is ready for our students. I've also reviewed curriculum and instructional processes and met with administrators over the past couple of weeks. I'm impressed with the work that's been done in the district so far and we're assuring to make sure that each student is seen as an individual and taught as an individual. Not only is that an Ohio Department of Ed goal, but it's also in evident in the reviews that I've done with Lakota Systems. That's a, that's a goal that's being worked on here and you should pat yourselves on the back as a Board of Education. Looking at, at individualized students and what they need to have is extremely important in a school system, especially one that's this size. And let me be clear, while these things are, these positive practices have all been started, there's still work to do. Principals and central office staff have begun to refocus on student achievement and learning. We're looking at data with a critical eye that will help us make the appropriate decisions for classrooms. Our teachers and principals will begin to refocus on the data to make important building decisions about day-to-day teaching and learning. This is why we're here, to educate all of our students. So that is a huge focus of mine, it will continue to be a focus of mine, and I continue to ask questions and try to learn more and understand what we need to do moving forward. And then again, we talked about the Community Diversity Committee meeting this week. There are several members who are actually representing different viewpoints and life experiences on the council, very similar to our student population, actually. I'm hopeful that good conversation and then sharing that conversation by the council members with other people will really help us learn about the district and the work that's occurring here. I think that's going to be a really great opportunity for the community to learn about Lakota and the diversity that's here and the needs of, of the students that we actually serve. So that would be the conclusion of my report for tonight and thank you for tolerating me speaking extra-long tonight, thank you.
That was not extra long, Dr. Lully. Thank you. That was a very thorough update, and I'm amazed at how much you've accomplished in such a short period of time. Comments?
Yes, I have a question. I've received, received some feedback regarding the kindergarten start time, and it's a little bit more, it's extra. And it's kind of confusing. And, and I don't think that some of the parents feel that it was necessary. And it's not in sync with the first grade through 12th grade, and it just adds extra steps and confusion for our parents who have multiple students at multiple buildings. So I'm, I have not received good feedback about the kindergarten start time. And it is quite confusing when I looked at it. I don't understand the M through L, the M through Z, and then the other half starting, that's fine. But then it says half workday, half workday, and then they, or half, half of the class, half the class. And I'm not quite clear what that necessarily means. And then there's another day that they're off where the other schools, the other grades are not off. So I think it was, I don't remember them doing this last year. I just.
We've done it every year.
Well, some of the feedback from like, that from the teachers was they, or not the teachers, but the parents, they didn't feel that that was needed. And it was.
I'll be happy to, to review that. I, I don't have the details specifically to be able to respond to that. So I'll review that. And I'll make sure that I follow up with the board on that. And, and we'll assess and see how it's working and if it's, if it's causing an issue with our parents. Because there are many buildings that our parents need to take their students to. So we'll take a look at that and see. And I'll get back to, to the board after I talk with curriculum and make sure that I understand why we do it that way and make sure that it makes sense.
But we wouldn't be able to change it for this year.
No, not this year because it's already been announced.
And I think, and my feedback was they, they received the reason, they, they asked questions and they received an answer, but they still, the parents were still unclear as to why that decision was made because it didn't make sense in their mind.
Was the communication around the timing and all that clear, that people knew where they needed to be?
There's an extra day off where the other students do not have a day off. And then if they could have just started exactly like the fir, the first grade through 12th grade and had that same type of pattern consistently through all their, through all the grades, that would have been a whole lot easier.
I think that reason, part of the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Part of, I know part of the reason that we started this is because, first of all, kindergartners, it's obviously so much newer to them and getting used to school. And we started this, I believe, when we went to all-day kindergarten. And it was a lot for a kindergartner to, so they do the half and half so that the teacher can better get to know the students. And the students can kind of ease their way in since it is so new for them and it's a whole day when it used to be a half a day. The day off on the Friday came from, it's just a lot for a five and six-year-old. And it gave them a little more time to ease themselves into kindergarten. That's why we, that's why we.
And, and I received that same reason, but the feedback was just be consistent. Like, you know, we don't need that extra precaution. Or, I mean, this is, I mean, maybe some children do.
I was gonna say, I think it depends on the parent.
Responded to, or that.
Yeah.
Had a conversation with me.
Or perhaps we do a third, a third, and a third. You know, let me, let me explore that for you.
Yeah, something that might be.
And see, so that everybody's in school at the same time. I understand what you're saying, that kindergartners aren't going on that last day when it's been a half and a half, and then they're not going that day. So there's childcare issues. There are different things that are occurring, I'm certain. But let me explore that a little bit more, and we'll come up with a better plan for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Anything else for Dr. Lully on the school year review? And Dr. Lully, we're happy to have you on our team sitting up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to number eight, new business board. This is a resolution for board member achievement.
Yeah, can I make a motion to read the resolution on board members achievement?
I would be grateful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said.
I want to make a motion to read the resolution on the board members achievement. Give us a second.
Go ahead and read the motion.
Okay. Resolution for board member achievement. Whereas Lina O'Connor has served Lakota School Boards as a board member with commitment and dedication for 16 years. The Board of Education chooses to recognize and acknowledge her for her past and current service to our students, staff, and community members, and forwards this recognition to the Ohio School Board Association as nomination for her, for her receipt of its board recognition award as part of the STAR Awards Program. The recognition award will be formally given at OSBA Southern Regional Conference this fall.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. I'll second the motion.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
So I have a prepared statement I would like to read. I'm sorry, but while our children are suffering the profoundly damaging consequences of racist programs such as CRT, D I, and SEL, as well as the overt and equally as damaging sexualization of our children and assault on what it even is to be born female, I could not in good conscious, conscience celebrate anything or anyone outside the victories for our children in those areas. I have been on this board for two years, and we have no victories, only abject failure. So I will be voting no.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Maybe you could explain to the community.
Your board?
Yes, please.
So there was an older master board member program through OSBA, and I received that back in 2017. They initiated a different program, and it has four components to it. The first component is service, and that is based on the work that you do as an OS, as a board member. Training, that would be the professional development that you engage in. There is an aptitude test. You have a certain score that you need to pass. And then there's recognition by your board. So this is that fourth step in the STAR Award. And this is the new version of the master board member program. And Mrs. Casper, I think you've at least reserved training?
I received something. I don't remember what it was. I think this.
Similar.
I don't remember.
Service or training?
Yeah, I think it was training, maybe. I don't remember.
So is this resolution piece a new component? Because I don't recall us doing this before.
Well, no one's on our board, no one on our board has achieved this before. So this, again, is a relatively no program. I think they started it two years ago.
And it's a four-step process.
It's a four-step process. It's incredibly awkward to have this on. Really, just so awkward.
I want to know what the aptitude test part is. That's interesting.
I'll tell you all about it. It's a quiz you have to take, so.
I have a comment to make on that. It's awkward because you are the president and it's been awarded to you, and you chair us. So it's good for you to, to make that comment. But I want to say here is that, what I want to say is that when a board member has served for this number of years and has this kind of achievement and is being recognized, I think it's something to, to celebrate. It doesn't matter who it is, but it's something that need to be acknowledged and celebrated. And I'm proud of, you're going to receive this award, and I think you deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. It should be called the Awkward Award, seriously. Further comments or discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Zink, call the roll.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Abstain. Thank you, board. Appreciate it. Number nine, we move to treasure recommendation action items before we take a motion. Mr. Zink, is there anything we need to know? Approval of board minutes, commercial paper reporting, and in accordance with Board Policy 6320, approval of an invoice for payment then and now?
The minutes is for July 17?
Yes.
I believe, yeah. Commercial paper, this is a compliance piece that we have to do. I've already submitted a report up to the Superintendent of the State of Education. I didn't say that right. And the Auditor of State's Office, I've already submitted it there. So the last piece is turn that into the board and get an approval on that. And then the last was a invoice at the end of the year for hotel rooms for a Behavioral Leadership Academy that was above $3,000. So that requires a board approval.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Thank you, Mr. Dean. Discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will move to number 10, Superintendent Recommendations Action Items. We will consider approval of personnel items A and approval of donation C. Is there anything we need to know, Dr. Lully?
Yes, we have several new hires that are listed on the board agenda. Some of them were not on the original personal item agenda. So if you have questions about any additional ones, we'll be happy to answer those. That's kind of the, the way that it goes at the beginning of a school year. People are added at the last minute to get them hired and in place. So it's, it's a standard procedure typically. We also have on the agenda a new Assistant Superintendent, Stacy Maney, who would begin in the district very quickly once the board approves her being hired. She is someone who will work with Mr. Vogelmann and support the district in the buildings and as well as in the central office areas. The other items on there for us, the transportation routes are typically, are required to be published and approved by a Board of Education every year, a standard operating procedure. And I'd just like to thank all the donations, the donors that have donated something to the Lakota local schools. I'd like to thank them. We appreciate all the donations, and we appreciate them thinking of us for those donations.
Thank you, Dr. Lully. Is there a motion? And again, we're only voting on A and C.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Discussion?
I do have a quick question on the personnel items. There was an exit interview. We've received one. Are you, and that is, that is something I think Isaac and I actually both pushed for, that the exit interview. And Rob sent us one communication with the feedback. Are you continuing to, to get the exit interviews filled out and giving, are you going to communicate the results from that?
I think that exit interviews are an important part of the personnel process. And if that's been the practice in the district, then we, we should and will continue that.
Okay, thank you. And then do you have a, like a date every month or every quarter? Like, what would the reporting on that look like?
Can I check with HR and see what they've done before? Is there a frequency that the, the will of the board has?
Well, we've only received one, but I was hoping personally just every month.
I would be comfortable allowing you to determine how often that should be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, board, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Before we move to B, Dr. Lully, would you like to introduce?
It's, it's my pleasure to introduce the new Assistant Superintendent, Stacy Maney. Stacy, would you come forward and say a few words for us, please?
Thank you, and thank you. I think this is on. Oh, yeah, it is on. Great, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for calling me up here. I have prepared just a brief statement and good evening, President O'Connor, board members, Treasurer Zink, Superintendent Lully. I'm humbled and grateful, grateful for the honor of being selected as Assistant Superintendent in Lakota Schools. I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to the entire community for placing their trust in me. I'm committed to building upon the exceptional achievements of Lakota Schools and fostering an inclusive environment where every student thrives. Together, we will continue to raise the bar of educational excellence, nurture a culture of collaboration, and empower students to reach their full potential. I look forward to working with the Ohio State Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Lully, and hand in hand with each of you as we embark on the exciting journey of educational transformation. Thank you again for this incredible opportunity. I am truly thrilled to serve as your Assistant Superintendent, and I'm grateful, having spoken to everyone today, to be part of the we, and we are Lakota. So looking forward to it.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Lully, just so that it's understood what the different areas of responsibility will be, Mr. Vogelmann will be doing secondary?
Actually, we're, we're having a conversation together to determine what the job duties are for each of the Assistant Superintendents. But the focus will be on support for the buildings, making sure that the principals have the supports that they need to have through their offices. Yes.
Terrific, with a focus on student achievement. So we'll hear more later. Thank you for that. Board will move to B, approval of the transportation routes for the 2023-24 school year per Administrative Code 3301.83.13A. Routes available for review at the Lakota Central Office should anyone be interested. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to make modifications to transportation routes for 2023-24 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Is there a discussion?
Yes, that's, as I've stated before, I believe we should provide students, all students with a right to school in K through 12. And also provide transportation to the schools outside the district, that, to students that live in the district. And I know we've been approving, I can't remember the name of that, but the not comply, we can't comply with the, whatever it's called.
In lieu of, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the in lieu of?
Yeah, payments in lieu of transportation.
Thank you so much. So I, I have issues with that. I think we should provide busing and, so I'm not going to approve the transportation routes for 2023 through 2024.
Did you have a comment?
Pardon?
Did you have a comment?
No, I did not.
Mrs. Schaefer? As Dr. Lully has said, it is required that we approve the transportation routes that's necessary to the function and business of the district. And I would agree, it would be terrific to be able to supply transportation. We've had previous discussions about that cost and whether or not that's practical for the district. I do think it's a conversation that is a part of our facilities plan and how we can help with that then. So it'll be a consideration in the future. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will move to closing comments. And we will start with Mrs. Bodie, please.
Good luck, everyone, for this next school year. I can't believe how fast this summer went. And I know everyone is excited to get back in the classroom and decorate their classes. And I'm excited, Dr. Lully, to see what you can do with the school district. And, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Thank you to all the staff that has worked so hard this year to get the buildings in tip-top shape. It's always, I always feel a little badly for custodians because they've worked so hard to make the floors gleam in that first day. They're just not quite as shiny after all the kiddos arrive, which is their whole objective. But they do a wonderful job making us ready for school to start, as well as all the staff that's worked on bettering our offerings and opportunities for our students. I had the opportunity to check my own sun schedule today, and honestly, the best part for me was we'll have some teachers we've had before and some teachers that are new to our family. But watching the sibling interaction and the family text that most everyone has, woo-hoo, you got that teacher, and I loved them. And that was such a great class. And that, to me, is the best part, is the relationships that our staff make with our students. Even their siblings know how much they'll be poured into this year to make them better and more prepared for college. And I'm so thankful that we have so many staff that are willing to do that each and every day for our kiddos. So thank you.
Welcome to our new Assistant Superintendent. We're glad to have you. And Dr. Lully, you did a great job on your first meeting. It wasn't even as long as you thought it was. It wasn't even as long as you thought it was, your little administrative report. Again, excited for the school year to start. It is my favorite time of the year. I love seeing all the kids get off the bus in their brand-new outfits. But besides our custodial staff, and I think you touched on it, our teachers have been working all summer to get ready for the following school year. I know you hear the, oh, teachers get the whole summer off. And yes, they get some time off. But I know that they have, every Wednesday, they are, they have a Wednesday kind of get-together meeting for curriculum and things going forward. And it is not mandatory, it's optional. And I understand that every Wednesday, there is a huge turnout of teachers that are coming just to want to better themselves for the following year and for their students. So shout out to them, as well as our custodian staff. And the shiny floors are my very favorite. I just love the shiny floors. Only my own house could be that shiny floors. Maybe I can get the custodians to come and make my floor shiny? No? Okay. That would be wrong. But so, yes, so I was just thinking, the next time we meet, your school will have already been in session. So good luck to everybody.
Dr. Lally?
I'd just like to get school started. I'm excited to see students in classrooms and see the teachers back. And in all honesty, I really was excited this week to see all the students in the buildings and on the fields. That's what this is about, the excitement that the students have, the joy that they share and that they show in all those activities that they're doing. And it just, it keeps us all young and it keeps us all very, very active. And I'm just, I'm excited to have them back. And I do want to thank everybody for the preparation that's occurred, whether they were teachers taking workshops, whether they're administrators taking the workshops, whether they're our custodial staff, our operations team, making sure that we are ready to go next week. So I'm looking forward to it. And I'm looking forward to convocation, to actually meeting staff members and to be able to celebrate the staff members that have completed specific numbers of years of service and recognize them for that. So thank you very much.
Want to welcome Dr. Lally to Lakota. First board meeting under your belt. Everything went well? No complaints here? Welcome Ms. Maney to Lakota also. Look forward to working with you as well in the upcoming future. And looking forward to, from the Treasurer's Office side, the school year getting off the ground because then everybody leaves us alone a little bit, more than they have been. We've been through two of our three new contract pays for the first pays of the new contract. So shout out to the Treasurer's or the payroll staff for doing that. That was, the next one is September 4th, and that is the big one. That is the one where we have about 1,600 staff for the first pay of their new contract. So that's always the exciting one. But we work out any of the bugs on the way up to that, so. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. D?
Okay, I want to say that I'm excited that we're starting a new year. I was nervous when we were going through all the turbulent time trying to see how the year is going to start. I'm excited that we are where we are right now. I thought it was not going to happen. First of all, I want to give a shout out to my fellow board members because I know we went through so much to get to where we are now. Thank you. We have Dr. Lally here and Stacy Maney is coming on board. I think we're off on a good start. And I'm excited that we are where we are. And I believe that we're going to get to where we want to be. Like you said, we have 60 languages in our school district. I want to inform you that are 60 languages. I speak five out of the 60, so. Thank you so much. We are excited. I've heard a lot of good news from community members about your activities and what you have started to do. And I want to encourage you to continue because it's been noticed. To everybody else, thank you so much. This year, I think it's going to be different. At this point, I believe it's going to happen this year.
Thank you, Mr. D. I agree with your statement that I believe we can get to where we need to be. And I think we're positioned very well with our leadership. I think we're positioned with great staff and really looking forward to the school year. You heard tonight about across the district, all the things that are going on to get us ready for the school year from our custodians. Kitchen staff is getting on, restocking the shelves. Our bus drivers are getting ready to pick up their routes again. Our Treasurer's Office is doing what they need to do to make sure everyone's getting paid. I don't know if people realize, because I know Mrs. Casper is very excited about the clean buildings, but it takes a lot of work to get those buildings into the place where they can be cleaned. So every year, at the end of the school year, our teachers have to take everything out of their classrooms and box it up. This is what I was told by our teachers. They've got to box their classrooms up so they can get to the floors. And everything can be thoroughly cleaned for our students to come back in the fall. So it is absolutely a team effort with all of the work that's done all year. And then culminating with that and getting ready again. I personally love convocation. It is the one time of year that we bring everybody together across the district, everybody that is involved in happening, in making education happen in our district. And it's just, it's always had a really important component to it for me. So I look forward to that day. It's nice to start the year off with that very positive. We are all working on this together. We all believe in our mission and what we're doing. So thank you to our staff, to everybody that's been involved.